Peter Bliss and Bob.
Here.
Dan Kader.
Here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Hadeen.
Here.
Russ Roloff.
Here.
Superintendent Collins.
Here.
Thank you, Scott. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
I'll motion.
Second. Any discussion?
I just want to share that depending upon time, I will give a teacher negotiations update, which means we close the meeting at that time. And again, I don't know if we'll have time because I have to be out two for a million by 7:30, so.
Okay.
If there is time, I'll close just for a 10-minute update on teacher negotiations, and if there's not, we'll skip it this time.
We'll get it updated at a different time. Okay. So we'll have a potential tentative item. Any further discussion? Okay, given that that's a maybe, a new item, can I get a vote on approving the agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the August 23, 2017, regular board meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. May I get a motion in a second to approve the bills payable?
I move that we pay the bills.
Second.
Thank you so much, you responsible young man. Is there any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, directly on to good news.
Trent Hanson, I invited him as our athletic director, not here to make decisions, but just to update us on fees and update us on some other things that are happening in his area. And so Trent, I'll take it away and leave it at that.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to spend a few minutes with you. I've got one bullet on the agenda, but I think it represents two items. The first item doesn't have a slide, and that's the participation rate table that I think you guys looked at either in a workshop or a formal meeting within the last couple of weeks. So I know Russ has one in front of him, maybe others do as well, but more than anything, I guess, I wanted to describe just how that came together and kind of, you know, answer any questions that you might have. But really, I polled about 20 school districts, conference alike, section alike, and then demographic alike, schools around us. What are your rates? Are they fixed, you know, same rate per sport? Are they variable, different rates for different sports based on things like length of season or expense, things like that? And what you have in the table that you've had a chance to look at is a summary of that by district, and then some averages. And I think the one thing that you'll see is that Hastings is maybe in a lower tier or a little bit below average in terms of what we charge our student athletes to participate, but it also described that as a point of pride. I think that can be a good thing. I'll talk briefly in my next item, but we're in the midst of, you know, youth sports landscape that's about a $15 billion industry across the country, and where we can have very accessible educational-based programs for kids to be a part of, I think that's a good thing. I also recognize you have to balance that against budgetary, you know, items, and when we look at particular changes, I think it's healthy to know where we stand and kind of where we fit. So again, I would say our rate per student athlete is a little bit below average. I think our family and individual caps are a little bit high. We're in a slight minority. It's probably 30 to 40% of school districts charge a fixed rate, same thing across all sports. A little bit over half charge a variable one. It might be, you know, 150 for the sport and 220 for that one. But again, I think that's well represented in the table that you have, so otherwise I'll just pause there and ask if you have any questions about that data as you've reviewed it, or any kind of interpretations that you have.
Why don't you just share with the board the process of what happens when a student athlete comes to you, or maybe doesn't come to you, but you know that they're not going out because they can't afford it? Just to walk the board through that process of what happens.
Yep. So we try to have a readily known but pretty discreet process if we feel like a student has a financial need. So the bottom line is this, if we have a student or a family member that contact us, it just, the call comes, is routed to me. If they make the request for a reduced or a waived fee, I don't require them to prove it, you know, I don't ask for a bank statement or anything like that. We just want to work with them. And typically, my question is, hey, what will work for you? And some folks just need extended time, you know, some need a little bit of a payment plan, some need a little bit of a reduction, and some ask for it to be waived. We don't require them to demonstrate free, reduced status. It's simply the request, and we know the, you know, the type of dignity and courage that you have to have even to pose the question. Oftentimes, it's the student that comes in first, which is a pretty difficult but also mature step that they're taking. So we try to make that, you know, readily available. And it's not data that we publicize, you know, but we do track it, you know, and keep it internally, so if that's something you guys ever wanted to look at. And it's consistent that we have some in every sport, but it's not, it's not a radical number, but it's also one that's, it's not shrinking either, you know? And I think the, when we can control those direct costs upfront, I think that helps because some of those indirect costs for, for travel and apparel and everything else that comes with it really can.
I think that would be some pretty good data for the board to consider. You know, we do know the people that come to you and ask, whether it be a student athlete or it be a parent. And we also know that there's probably some student athletes or parents that don't ask, and even though we, we might know through the years, hey, you've been in football and all of a sudden you're not. And we ask, we can go ask that question, why? But it might be good for the board to see, you know, roughly how many people that is that.
For sure.
Are student athletes. Because I know that we are, we are going to be looking at our fees, and also if you remain stagnant, and the board has had this discussion at some of our work sessions, if you get too far away from what the norm of what everybody else is, then you don't want to make a huge jump in one year either.
Fair.
So those are the things that we'll be talking about, you and getting, getting your opinion down the road on that issue.
The other thing, you sparked a quick thought too, that's not represented in the table, but would be good for your math, you know, kind of as you look at it, is we, on average, have a little over 700 unduplicated students register for a sport, and then have a total of somewhere between 1,000 and 1,200 duplicated registrations, you know, as some kids will play two or three different sports. So any change that you might make, I would recommend, you know, just multiply it by 1,000 registrations, and that'll give you your, you know, the economic impact of whatever change you might make, you know, if that'd be $5 or $25 or $50, just to kind of give you a good ballpark. You know, it's a little bit different from year to year, but I think using 1,000 is a good, a good benchmark. That helps some of your discussions.
How long have we been at the 150 mark? You know?
A long time? Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to look. I don't, I don't have a number. Boy, I want to, I mean, close to 10 years, maybe? I think that's a fair guess. I mean, that's.
Yeah, because I've been here longer than that, and I don't remember in the last decade changing. And part of what Trent said, that's not a bad thing either, if it helps increase our participation, there's that double-edged sword there.
I think we bumped it just a little bit. Let's statute out for an depth year coming into that. I think that was 10 or 11 years ago then, so.
And it might have been like 125 to 150, maybe 100 to 150, something like that?
Yep.
Anything else on that one? Okay, second item is, actually, you can back up one half step, Deanna, sorry about that. Go back to the, you love looking at yourself in a photo, right? What's up there? I'm hiding in there. I don't know if I'll necessarily wrap myself up, but I do have school colors on, and I'm somewhere in the middle, but.
Right here.
No, but what I wanted to share with you, just to inform you, is that our athletic department at the high schools in phase one of what, of becoming an inside-out school. And I'll explain a little bit about what that, what that means here briefly, but as an AD, what I've done is I've volunteered to become a part of a year-long professional development cohort. And you see most of the folks here, so these are ADs from across the state that represent metro and rural schools and big schools and small schools, and it's a, it's a pilot cohort. And our purpose really is to better define and maybe more specifically affirm the values and the vision, really the place of educational athletics in this vast landscape that we call youth sports, you know, knowing that oftentimes our club sports and our school sports and collegiate and professional sports have ideologies that just don't align, you know? We've got families that are intermixed all over the place in this, in this piece. So it's really a fascinating and complex time. I mentioned that, you know, even if you saw the cover of Time Magazine in the last couple of weeks, they've got a pretty large article, a research article, it's really an interesting read, but, you know, the youth sport industry is about $15 billion, which is, which has doubled in the last 10 years. The average family with kids in youth sports spends up to $1,000 a month on associated costs for travel and equipment and team fees and all those type of things. And then also, you can just cringe thinking about your own experiences, but to put a hard number on it is pretty, pretty eye-popping. We have, at the same time, record rates of kids signing up and trying sports in grades K through 5 higher than ever before, but yet we have record rates of attrition and kids dropping out of sports completely between grade six and nine. So trying to kind of, you know, juxtaposos against each other is really interesting. We also have the highest rates in the multiple decades of tracking it of high school coach and administrator turnover in athletics. And to be very specific, the three-year average from the last three years is 25% of head coaches and ADs across the country turnover every year, which, you know, you all represent different businesses and organizations, and a one-out-of-four turn every year is, is pretty difficult to maintain. And while a select few of those are non-renewed or asked not to come back, the vast majority are leaving voluntarily, you know, saying, I'm just, I'm out of here, you know, for a lot of different reasons. So this cohort really is, you know, it's a call for collaboration, and it's a call for partnership and to commit to what we're calling a five-step pathway. So Deanna, if you'd click to that next slide now, it's a little bit small to see, but I can share this with you on an email, but there's an implementation pathway that starts with establishing common language, affirming coaches' purpose statements, working towards a collaborative departmental purpose statement, working its way all the way through defining success and even having job descriptions that the school board will authenticate to make sure that we're really all on the same page about what educational athletics is all about. And so what I do is I attend a monthly meeting, about a half-day meeting with those 70 ADs where we go through, you know, some training and exposure to this pilot programming. I come back, and then I've got a group of five head coaches that have also opted in and volunteered to be kind of a small subcommittee that'll test some curriculum, kind of try some sampling out with their own teams and within their own coaching staffs. And we're just kind of this, again, this dummy group in the state of Minnesota, and there are probably almost 20 states at this point that have signed up in some regard, but we're, we're the first ones, primarily because the leaders of this initiative, one is Jody Redman, who's an associate director at the Minnesota State High School, and has really championed a lot of really sound why we play curriculum, and so she's out in front of it. And her partner is Joe Airman, who wrote a really powerful book called Inside Out Coaching. So he's a nationally recognized, you know, author and speaker on youth sport transformation. So those are the two facilitators that I'm exposed to. I bring that back, I share it with our kind of subcommittee, and then we're testing this out on a sport-by-sport and kind of lesson-by-leçon basis. And like anything that's in test mode, it's a little bit messy, you know, sometimes it's kind of what you expected, and other times we're bumping into some dead ends, but it's, it's something that's fun to be out in front of. And so we're excited about it, kind of to see where it can go. And as a quick for instance, you know, step one talks about, you know, defining goals and defining purpose. And so to be brass tacks about what that means in our conversations is that when you think of the world of competitive athletics, all of us are goal-oriented. Goals typically are fixed, they're oftentimes associated in the numbers, it's winning the game, it's where did you finish in the standings or the section, it's a statistical milestone, you know, something like that. But those aren't the only reasons or even the primary reasons that we do something. They're measuring sticks, and they're important. But the purpose, which is, we're a both-and, it's not goals or purpose, it's goals and purpose. When you poll any coach about why they coach, they don't talk about, you know, banners on the wall or trophies in the case, it's about positively transforming and influencing the kids that are in front of them every day, and it's keeping the focus on that in the midst of, of those goal-driven conversations too. So it's talking about what that really means, what that looks like, you know, on a day-by-day basis, what that looks like in a practice and, and a game and things like that. So that's kind of the baseline of where we started, but it's made for some great conversation, you know, within coaching staffs and as a broad department. And we're excited to see where it goes, so hopefully I can come back in a year and give you a positive update. The next track would be, we go through this whole year, if we kind of accomplish some of these steps, then as an inside-out school, next year we'd have full access to this curriculum, that all of our coaches would take within their own vertical programs and start imparting, you know, some of those character-driven pieces that most, most coaches are all about, but without a framework, you know, and with an increasing number of folks that aren't coming to us from an educational background, I think it's a really critical time to front-load some of our approach with this. So if that makes sense, the way that I've thrown it at you, put it in a nutshell, that's the good news for the start of the fall. So I'll answer a question or two if you have one, otherwise I'll get out of the way.
Trent, was there research that they cited as to why kids are dropping out?
Yeah. And I'll maybe answer it in reverse, you know, there, there, and I could share a handful of these different links and resources with you, it's fascinating to look at, but when you poll kids, whether they're six or 16, about the top five or top 10 reasons why they play, winning is always in the list, and it's never in the top five. You know, they play to be with their friends, they play to be physically active, you know, they play to be challenged. And when it stops being fun, when they aren't with their friends, and it becomes basically too serious and competitive too early, they're out. And so, you know, we have traveling teams at younger and younger ages, we have teams traveling farther than they've ever traveled before, you know, it's not uncommon to see hundreds and thousands of dollars for kids to play on teams when they're in first grade. It's pretty incredible. And so quite frankly, the student and/or the family just burns out of the grind, sadly, and it's by sixth or seventh grade, you know, and it's a little bit of this, it becomes this little bit self-fulfilling where, yeah, you gotta get on, you gotta get on the train early if you want to be able to compete, but then getting on the train oftentimes means you're just going to get off it faster. So we are not often promoting lifelong, you know, physical participation, you know, we have kids leaving sports in seventh, eighth, ninth grade when it's arguably at their most critical time to stay engaged and stay connected and be part of something bigger than just their own path. And we acknowledge it's a, I don't know what to use, but I mean, it's a massive ship to turn, if you want to think of it metaphorically, you know what I mean? It's, it's a beast, but we take it at one conversation at a time.
I just was going to ask you, you also initiated this year the electronic tickets.
Yeah.
Just, just share how that's going, or your perspective on that so far, just real quick.
Yeah. Well, and as a reminder, so it's kind of two new things in one. So we're offering a season pass that we've never offered before, so you buy the season pass, you can get at any, any home event with the exception of playoffs, and our community that includes hockey, which is always the number one question. Can I get into hockey usually? And, but it's also offered only in electronic format, a digital pass, to want people to be able to test that out. So what it is, does anyone here have it? All right, that's okay. Well, it's an app that you download on your phone through the app store, doesn't matter what kind of phone you have. So there's no scanners, there's no paper. Because we embed the vendor cost into the ticket price, there's also no cost to us as a school district or athletic department. But the user downloads this app onto their phone, they've got this digital pass, and they just bring it to the gate when they come to the game, and it's like a finger swipe right across the screen that our ticket takers are, are prepped to use. So we've sold almost 50 of them, and I don't know if that's great or terrible, because we've done it before, so.
Well, the here's a zero.
Yeah, right, almost 50. But I would say this, I try to ask our frequent users and people, we have had, knock on wood, no glitchy issues, everyone's been able to get in. People love the convenience of it. We often have people that aren't cash carriers, and then, you know, if you want to go to the soccer game at 5 and the volleyball game at 7, you're into both. Or, you know, if you're a student or your neighbor only plays one sport, now it's a little bit more, it's a little easier to get to another game because, you know, you're got out a little bit. So there's a, a value point for families, I think there's a convenience point for our community, and so we're encouraged by it, just as a start. So as long as it continues to work and people find it's at a nice relative price point, I think it's, we're going in a good direction.
I just want to share with the board too, that I was in attendance last week at the section recognition, and Trent did a, number one, he thought of getting recognition to Vicky Davis. I've been going to that recognition for over a decade now, and I just, Vicky's around you so much, you just forget about what she has done for not only us but for so many sports in the state. And not only did Trent think of Vicky Davis, but he did just a really good job of speaking in front of a group of about 50 about everything that she's done in athletics and refereeing, and it's just, I learned something every news. So thank you, Trent, for being a good spokesperson for our district and that type of a venue, so.
Yeah, that's one.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
I have one other question. Inside-out school initiative, because it's new.
Yeah.
And I totally support it, because I think it's long overdue, you know, it was a product of the 1980s high school sports. You know, we had competitive teams and all that, but we had kind of sort of, I'd say, sports-like balance, if you want to call it that, and I think we're into it for some of the right reasons. Now, I didn't become a, I did become a professional tennis player, so, but now, I don't know, maybe it's just the games I'm going to. I mean, parents seem to be hyper-involved, and they do kind of have this win-at-all-cost attitude, like their coaches being criticized based on their, you know, win-loss record rather than what sort of, you know, inspirational lessons they're teaching the athletes as far as how to go onward about their lives and the lessons learned. So up to this point, has it been 100% positive, or you're already getting grief from someone who, if their son isn't, you know, if we don't win the regional tournament, it's going to hurt their scholarship off?
Yeah, fair. That's a great question, with probably a much more long-winded answer than you want to take time for, but I think a lot of the pressure, that pressure oftentimes is indirect. You know, unlike any other administrator, I'll field calls of, of support and calls of concern. I think what we really try to focus on is creating a framework where, where it's a parent handbook that people have to read before they sign up, or it's how we process a concern when it comes in, because we want to be sensitive but want to route those things in the right way. I think that you're better off asking our coaches, right? I mean, I would hope that they would feel supported in that regard. No one's perfect, we all make mistakes, but again, it's all about, you know, the intent and kind of really what we're all about. And we don't have a coach on our staff that doesn't want to win, right? And we don't have kids that don't want to develop and be the best they can be. But we also know, you hit on it, I mean, 97% of the kids that play, it's terminal. When they graduate, they don't play a sport again. You know, the only time they're picking up the racket or playing ball accordingly is, is, you know, at open gym or for fun or with their friends, and we want to continue to do that. But it also then begs the question about the amount of intensity, you know, and everything that we're pouring into it. If we're only going to use the scoreboard and statistics, we're, we're in the wrong business. That's, that's what the pros are for. Again, it's not to suggest those things aren't important, because we all are, but it's keeping it in its proper place. I could talk more at a different, a different meeting, but we're using a, a program scorecard, we're calling it, but just to birdwalk a little bit, and we're working on, it's an internal process at this point, but it really has a pie divided up into four pieces, you know? Competitive performance is one of those four things, but it's balanced against our academic progress, our participation, retention in multi-sport rates, and the third one and the fourth one is student-athlete feedback that's focused on character and competence development and all those other things that we really want. So I think by and large, it reflects, you know, most of our community, and yep, sometimes people get a little too fired up, but that's okay too, we can work with that where they're at and kind of bring it back in, so. Feel good about where we are.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trent.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we've got a couple items for superintendent's report.
I'm passing around the review and comment, and I think there might be one or two extra for people in attendance you'll have to share. But this is new for school boards. It's brand-new this year. Legislation required that whenever a school district goes out for a, a bond issue, that they have to have a review and comment. And it can take place at the board meeting, which it is doing this evening. So basically, a superintendent, I share what's happening with the bond, how the process went, and what MDE had to say back about it, and then I ask if there's any comments from the audience, and if there aren't any comments, we've fulfilled the requirement, or even if there are comments, we listen to those comments, and then we've fulfilled our requirement. So at this time, for those people viewing at home, I, I share some of the things that we had to do as a school district. So for example, we had to submit the geographic area of our school. Is it 500 square miles? Is it located near a metropolitan area? Are we a suburban school district? So we share that information. We have to turn in the square footage of all of our buildings, the age of our buildings. We have to do a walkthrough analysis. What are some of the issues at our middle school? What are some of the issues at our high school? And a lot of that reflects then and ties back to then what we are doing in the project, because if your roof is leaking at the high school, you say that the quality of the roof is not good. If your track has cracks in it, you share that crack, it's deteriorated, et cetera. So that's some of the information that we, we share with them. Then we have to give them a description of what's in the $49.5 million project. We have to, how is it going to be financed? What's the financial stability of the school district, et cetera? So basically, the state of Minnesota is asking for a comprehensive overview of the project of our facilities, of our community, of our ability to pay, what other bonds do we have out there, what other levies do we have out there, et cetera. We also then have to provide documentation that if this bond is voted and approved, that we're going to follow the requirements as outlined in statute for who can work on the project. Are we meeting all the codes? Are we meeting OSHA? Are we meeting the compliance of workers that are coming on our site? So that's phase one then of what we, all the background that goes in for the review and comment. And as you can imagine, it's quite a lengthy document, and the commissioner of education has somebody that reviews every item of it. This time, I would say that we were contacted by that individual on three different things to give more updated and background information. You always wonder when you submit it, is anybody really looking at it and to what detail? It was looked at with great, great detail. So for, I'll just give you one example. When we submitted that, we were doing, that we wanted $1.2 million for technology, they came back and said, for what? I mean, you just can't say to us that we want $1.2 million of technology. Part of the catch-22 in that is I don't know what some of that technology will be three years from now and four years from now. So we, we went through and itemized that if we did five computer labs a year, it would cost this much. If we did so many servers a year, it would cost this much. So that's the level of detail that they want, because they're the safeguard for the community that we're doing our due diligence as a school district and a school board. Then they come back, and that's on page three of the document that you're sharing, that you're having shared with you, and they outline and confirm that the Hastings School District is going for a $49.52 million bond. They outline what you've seen in other presentations, how much of it's going to be at the high school, what are those costs, how much of it's going to be to HVAC, what are those costs? And they give you not a detailed list of everything that is in the $49.52 million bond, but they give you an overview of what, what makes that up. Then within that letter, and I'm supposed to read this out loud, so I will, this is what they shared back. Though enrollment is expected to decline about 5% in the next five years, the district believes existing revenues will be sufficient to fund any unanticipated operational cost increases associated with the proposed site and facility improvements. In addition, the school board believes the proposed projects are in the best long-term interest of the district. If the bond referendum is successful and bonds are sold, the debt service for the facility-related portion of bonds will be eligible for debt service equalization under Minnesota statute 123B.53 subdivision 3, if the bond schedule is approved. The amount of debt service equalization aid, if any, the district receives is determined annually and is dependent upon property wealth, student population, and other statutory requirements. So then from the commissioner, she states, based upon the department's analysis of the school district's required documentation and other pertinent information from sources of Minnesota Department of Education, the commissioner of education provides a positive review and comment. Basically saying that they're approving our $49.52 million bond vote in November. So with that, I now ask if there's anybody in the public that has any comment? And if not, we've, and even if they do, we, so is there anybody that wants to comment at this time? All right, so we've fulfilled our requirements. And now we'll ask our attorney, it's a little bit vague on after we've done this, what do we now have to submit? And I believe it's just a statement in the minutes from our board meeting that this took place. And then we submit that to the state that we did the requirement. With that, then I'm going to move to the other superintendent report update, and that's the TIES update. You heard at our work session that there continues to be some concern from school districts about the longevity of TIES. There is definitely concern on my part as superintendent and to the fault of no one. And I was at a, as you heard at our work session, I was at a meeting probably about two weeks ago. Alls I can tell you is that there's still been a lot of behind-the-scenes back-and-forth between superintendents who are members. I'm going to a meeting in Bloomington with the Bloomington Superintendent. They're one of the 12 school districts that has said they're going to withdraw from TIES. They're the largest school district that has said that they're going to withdraw from TIES. At that meeting will be eight other superintendents. All eight of them, other than myself, are districts that have submitted that they're going to withdraw from TIES. Now remember, it's odd that you can submit that you're going to withdraw, but then seven months later, you can submit that you've changed your mind. So just because all nine school districts have submitted that letter doesn't mean that they're going to withdraw. Bloomington has said they are going to withdraw. And so I'll know more after that Monday meeting. And I'll have more factual information and background information to give you at our next work session about TIES. So I don't know if there's any questions at this time, but I'll just say that it continues to be a concern. And it's one of these situations that I definitely wish I had a crystal ball because there's so many variables in which direction being a member of the organization can bring us.
Do we have a contingency plan or a long-range plan if this doesn't work with TIES?
We really don't need one because we get a lot of our services now elsewhere. And that's one of the problems that's happening with TIES. As we used to have our student information that we would purchase from them, and now we're with Infinite Campus. When we used to have our website with them, and now we've gone to a different vendor. So at one point in time, they used to be a major hub for all technology initiatives. But now, as technology has blossomed and boom, there are so many other vendors that we can get these resources from. Probably back in 2000, 2003, our financial software, our systems, we went with them. Then we went to smart finance. And so quite honestly, we don't get a lot of services from them right now. One of the big ones is that they're an internet provider. But other schools who aren't members get their internet from them. So just because we're not a member, doesn't mean that we can't go get that service from them. So lots of schools are questioning, what's the benefit of us paying these annual fees because we were one of the 45 original? And we pay these fees, but we're not getting our value back out of it. And again, I said this, I fault nobody leading the organization. It's part of the times that we live in, a very competitive world in the technology world.
Tim Emery's has a question you just reminded me of. You know, getting feedback on our open houses at the beginning of the year and getting almost universally positive feedback. And it sounds like everyone did a fabulous job and everyone's really excited about the new year. But the one, I won't even say it was a negative comment, but it was kind of a question, so to speak, because I heard that, and being no kids in the system anymore, I don't even know if this is true or not. But the observation was made that they're being directed to different systems to kind of check the statuses of their different kids, depending on what grade level they're in. And so they want to see their homework assignments or whatnot. So one teacher may be using one system, a different teacher might be using a different system. Is that maybe because we have kind of a, you know, foot in several different camps here right now at the moment?
I don't think so, but I'm going to.
That's going to be about school.
One in the high school and one in the middle school. What I have seen is that Infinite Campus is absolutely, positively, you're going there to get grades, et cetera. But most of the time, that is a retrospective look back.
Yeah.
Some teachers will put out, in some cases, a semester of, here's all the assignments for the semester. And they just put it out there, and you can see what's coming up. Most teachers use it retrospectively, and then they use their own individual website for more up-to-date information.
Okay, now I get it.
So that's what I'm seeing, but I'm not seeing a different system other than a webpage in our Infinite Campus. That's.
That's still a good point for us to talk about internally on our tech committee, though, that point. I'll put that on our tech committee discussion.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
All right.
All right, with that, we're going to move on to our action items. For our first action item, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the proposed maximum levy limitations and certification of the 2017 payable 2018 levy. This budget and levy will be discussed at the December 13, 2017, regular board meeting, where the public is welcome and will be allowed to speak at this meeting. The final levy will be adopted at the December 13, 2017, board meeting.
And for the veteran board members, you've heard me say this year after year after year. We always approve the maximum levy certification now. And then as more information, financial information comes in, you could reduce that maximum levy. I don't know why, we never have, because we need the maximum. If we're going out for an operating levy increase, it's safe to say that we're going to need that. So I recommend that at this meeting, you go for the maximum levy certification. Just so you know, as board members, Kim and I received what our levy would go up for this current year. So you'll be getting information down the road that the levy would go up about 1.9%. Even having said that, our five-year average of our levy has gone up .21 of a percent over the last five years. The main reason that it will be going up is because of the long LTFM dollars for the facility maintenance. Those are slowly going up, and we know that's one of the reasons we kept our bond at $49.5 million, because we know as this other revenue is coming in, we're hoping that combined, we can get projects done and then we can do some more maintenance along that time. So when we get into the details in November and December, you'll be hearing that it will be going up 1.9%. And again, over the last five years, that's a total of .21 of a percent. So for tonight's purpose, I definitely, as I have every year, recommend that the school board approves maximum levy, and then we get into the details in November and December.
I'll make that motion. I have a question about voting for this motion.
I'll second. All right, given we have a motion in a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, my only question was around the, that's going to be discussed on the December 13 regular board meeting. Does that mean that we don't have to this year have these different truth and taxation?
That's right. Just like tonight, we were able to do the review and comment at the same meeting, we can now do the truth and taxation meeting on the same evening.
Oh, that's nice.
Yep.
Cool, thank you.
Is there any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Oh, no, I won't, it's a roll call vote.
Joe Becker.
Yes.
Andy Bertram.
Yes.
Peter Busenbach.
Yes.
Dan Kader.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Adine.
Yes.
Russ Roloff.
Yes.
Motion passes. Our next action item is a motion to approve a resolution appointing election judges for the November 7, 2017, school district general and special election.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion or questions? Seems like a good idea to have election judges there. I think we should go that way. This is also a roll call vote, Andy.
Joe Becker.
Yes.
Andy Bertram, yes. Peter Busenbach.
Yes.
Dan Kader.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Adine.
Yes.
Russ Roloff.
Yes.
Our third action item is a motion to approve the participation of the following part-time teachers who are employed at less than 0.8 FTE in the TRA part-time mobility program. We have two teachers listed. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This isn't a cost to the district, it's a formality that we go through that they can participate in the teacher retirement program.
All right, thank you. Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our fourth action item is a motion to accept the resignation of a couple of individuals listed below. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
I'm just curious on the Title I position. Is that a change in, seems like, okay, I'll just say it. This person's been on the, like, three agendas in six months. You know, so is there anything going on with the position?
No.
Okay, all right, all right. Wonderful person, too, by the way.
Yeah, no, that's all I can say at the board table, is no.
No, okay.
Always something we did.
Is there any further discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our fifth action item is a motion to approve four leaves. Could I get a motion in a second?
I'll make the motion, second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our sixth action item tonight is a motion to approve the employment of four people. Could I get a motion in a second?
I'll motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We've got a number of upcoming meetings. One recently passed, that was at 5:00 tonight, it was a community meeting. I just encourage everybody to get those on their calendar. Do you, is this sufficient time?
Yeah, we'll just close, we can go in the room next door and we can close for 10 minutes. I'll give you the update and.
And then you'll get on the road.
Yep, and I think that, Andy, you were going to join me for that, are you still going to be able to?
You bet.
And Dan, are you still going to be able to?
Yes.
Okay. And then I did, there's frequently asked questions, flyers over on that table. So if anybody wants to take them, whether it be board members or a member in the audience, and share it with people, I know that there's, we have people on, or residents that are on E-News, but we also have residents that don't get E-News. So that flyers a good handout on the frequently asked questions. So with that, motion to close?
Yeah, could I get a motion in a second to close?
I'll make the motion close meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So we'll move next door.
Yeah, we'll move next door.